Good evening. This is the April 5th, 2018 meeting of the Monroff Planning and Zoning Commission. We're in town council chambers. It is now 7:03 PM. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the commissioners please introduce themselves, starting on my right?
Ryan Cotton, alternate.
Jonathan Formicella, alternate.
Leon and Rosie, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman.
Paul Leacy, secretary.
Will Gresta, planner.
Scott Schloss, line leader, school director in town.
Rebecca Lloyd, recording secretary.
And who do we seat tonight?
We need two?
Let's see, we need two, so that's...
That would be you two.
Jonathan and Ryan. Okay, moving on. Item number three, A, executive session. Call for a motion?
Yes, I move to enter into executive session to discuss pending litigation with special counsel.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to adjourn into special session at 7:04 PM. Ask everyone other than first selectman and special counsel to please leave the room.
You ready?
Yes.
I'll sit. So I move to reconvene in the regular meeting?
Second.
Motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's 7:27. We're back in session. We held an executive session to discuss pending legal issues and the matter has been tabled for the time being. All right, item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on a matter not related to a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number five, general appointments, we have none. Public hearings. Item number six, RAA 2018-02, file number 997E, ad use in I-2 district. This is a continuation of a previously opened public hearing. We reconvene from March 1st. Will, do we have anything new on this?
We have the draft, MetroCog response to the referral, which is Exhibit 12. That is dated 3/20/18. All right, excuse me, the document dated 3/15/18. We received it on 3/20/18. It's been more than 10 days, and then that document says if we do not receive further correspondence, except the draft, there's no further correspondence. That's all.
Okay. For the applicant?
Attorney Dominic Thomas Cohn, and Thomas 315, Main Street, Connecticut, for the applicant. I made the presentation at the last meeting. I thought we had a very good discussion. As the chairman pointed out, we have bented this through the subcommittee quite thoroughly. I have nothing further to present. We were just waiting for the final cog report.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody? Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions, comments, agree, disagree, didn't think so? All right, Mr. Thomas, that's it. We thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much for your attention to this matter and for the consideration through the subcommittee process and everything. Thank you.
So what's the committee's feeling on this? Should we close this hearing?
Close.
All right. Hearing's closed. Item number seven, SCP 2017-14-A3. The applicant has requested that we postpone this until April 19th. Site plan review. Item number eight, site development plan, we have none. Onto deliberations and determinations. Number nine, time extensions, we have none. Item 10, bond releases, we have none. Item number 11, permit amendment modifications, SCP 2016-12-A1, file number 1582A, 154 Enterprise Drive. Do we have new exhibits?
Exhibit one, permit amendment modification application. Exhibit two, project narrative. Exhibit three, email correspondence with Connecticut DEEP. Exhibit four, plan set. Exhibit five, construction building plan set. Exhibit six, permanent public health notification. Exhibit seven, town engineer comments. Exhibit eight, fire marshal comments. Exhibit nine, building official comments. And exhibit 10, planner comments. That's it.
Okay. For the applicant?
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineers, offices located at 501 Main Street here in Monroe. Forgive me, I left my folder of all my papers in the car, so I'm going to wing this a little bit. But it's actually a really straightforward application. What we've submitted to the commission is a permanent approval amendment modification for a project that's currently under construction at 154 Enterprise in Monroe. This is part of the Pepper Street Business Park. Just to orient everybody in the town of Monroe, the business park is up on the northern, accessed off of Route 25, and right at the northern boundary of the town, just south of the town line, Newtown. So we have 154 and 164 Enterprise Drive was something that was reviewed and approved last year. It's been under construction. This project was approved in phases. So Phase 1 was the construction of an industrial building on 154 Enterprise, and Phase 2 was for the construction of a second building on 164 Enterprise Drive here. So we've progressed with construction. We're actually, the building is up. If you guys drive by, I think it looks great. They're actually looking to be completed with the building sometime in June. But during the construction process, there have been a number of very minor modifications that have come up. We've actually been able to process a number of those administratively with staff, very minor things that we just deal with during construction, but there were some other, a little bit more substantive changes that we wanted to bring back before the commission to review with you. So this is the previously approved plan. One of the components of the plan was the construction of four covered storage bins towards the rear of the property, and this is one of those items that's subject to modification. Before you, here's the amended site plan layout, and we actually haven't been able to, we did get some comments back from both Will and Scott. We were able to accommodate and address pretty much all of those. Some of those are very minor and just notations that, things that were shown on the approval drawings that were taken off the construction documents. A lot of those are things that are very simple to clarify. And just to summarize some of the changes in the site plan, so what we're proposing to do is to slightly modify the storage bins in that we're looking to actually only cover half of the storage area and leave the second half of the storage bins to be open to the air. This, all of this area was previously approved as outdoor storage, which was permissive based on some past variances granted for the project. We're within our allotted available outdoor storage. This doesn't affect those calculations at all, and this has been reviewed and approved with the wetlands commission, and they actually allowed for these approvals, these modifications to be made administratively through staff. So we're proposing to modify this to eliminate half of the covered storage. It would still be open storage. There's still bin construction for the storage of materials. The material that's still going to be covered is still going to be salt and likely some topsoil. The rest of the material that will be stored here will be other gravel and other clean fill, as established through DEEP. We made a couple other very minor modifications on the site plan based on where the septic system was installed and the septic tank. We had to make a very minor tweak to this curb. We're able to address your comment, Will, and bring that in. We have a septic tank here with a rim or a manhole, which kind of prevented us and made us modify it in the first place. That was the reason for that change. Another component, too, is actually part of, as part of construction, the project was approved with 4,500 square feet of mezzanine space. They're electing to only construct half of that mezzanine space at this time, which was incorporated into the building, approved building permit plans. However, just for the commission's sake, we're only going to be building out half of this space, and this will be built at a later date. From a drainage plan standpoint, very minor changes as well. We are incorporating a, the applicant would like to incorporate some floor drains within the building, simply for the ability for him to bring in some of his trucks. Eastern Land Management is a landscape contractor out of Stanford. He wanted to have the ability to simply wash down and rent some of his vehicles. So we are proposing a series of floor drains in the building, which will be drained into a 2,000 gallon underground storage tank here. Part of our application, we actually submitted some correspondence we had with DEEP that indicates that based on how this is going to be used and what it's going to be used for, there's no reason to register that tank as a UST with DEEP. So I wanted to make sure the commission had that information, so you were aware that we are doing that coordination. And there were some comments about maintenance. We're actually going to be adding a note to the plan to talk about how that would be maintained, it would be checked. We, an alarm with a float, which would be installed, so that'll be have, that'll be wired back into the building. That'll have both an audible and visual alarm once the water elevation, once the water level reaches a certain elevation. Based on anticipated use and operation, we think that this tank would only need to be pumped out probably twice a year, but it will be actively maintained and monitored to ensure that once the level gets to a certain point, they're going to pump that out as needed.
And there is no discharge?
There's no discharge. It's simply two trench drains in the building pumped directly into a tank that's just sitting there. It's just a storage tank. We made some other very minor tweaks as part of our, to this plan, just to adjust some grades based on, you know, rock encountered in the field, things like that, but nothing of substance. We did actually modify just based on some drainage. We had a, previously had a catch basin here running along the front of the property based on some shallow rock. We were able to work with staff to have a leak-off proposed on the side of the building here into a yard drain. That was something that we've already worked through with staff. From a utility standpoint, we have revised utility plan, amended utility plan. This incorporates provisions for a generator to be installed next to the building, just for, you know, very minor building functions. We also, again, showed the storage tank here and the ASBIL system, or the septic system for the ASBIL as it's been installed. From a landscape standpoint, one of the components, there was a, as part of the site construction, there was a large outcrop of rock found in front of the site in this location here, so we modified our plan to just simply plant around that. The contractor or the applicant also requested we swap out some trees. We had three tupulos, and I guess the size is very difficult to actually find, so we swapped those out with elm trees along the front of the property. And then just made some minor modifications around the generator pad, et cetera. From a lighting standpoint, our previous approved plan, we had as part of this covered storage area, we had building mounted or wall-mounted lights to this structure itself over each one of these four bins. Since we eliminated portions of that which was covered, we eliminated those light fixtures and added another light fixture in this location here, just to make sure we had adequate light level throughout all other fixtures and pole lights and everything maintained the same. We added some additional detail, details for the storage tank. We incorporated an irrigation plan. The contractor, the applicant, so can install irrigation, so we wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that. That's been installed. We made some minor modifications to that to ensure that those heads were outside of the right-of-way and they're all on our property, one of the comments from staff. We have the revised floor plans and elevations submitted, simply showing the limit of the second floor that's constructed as part of this initial phase. We've also showed the trench drains inside the building. From an elevation standpoint, the applicant's actually elected to eliminate two overhead doors, which were previously approved and shown in these locations. They wanted to eliminate those. So we have updated elevations, which reflects that. We'd also shown these overhead doors, I think initially they were, they were, they were installed as white. He wanted to paint them tan. We wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that. Based on a construction meeting this morning, he actually wants to keep them white, so that's not a modification that we're going to be making. They're still going to be white. Just wanted to communicate that with you. And then we also have an updated plan showing the storage, the storage bins, the two salt bins do have that vinyl cover. The sand bins, excuse me, sand bins are, they don't have a front cover, and then this is the portion that would just be uncovered. One of the, obviously, this commission has taken some steps to ensure that protections are in place, so that when an applicant goes to request the CO, there are certain elements not completed, they're not granted that CO until that happens. Based on a construction meeting this morning, there are a couple elements to this plan that the applicant would like to kind of run by the commission. There are three components that may not be completed, three site components that may not be completed when they're ready to occupy the building. Those would be part of this, and again, I apologize, this wasn't in the submission materials, but I wanted to bring it up with the commission. They're very minor. We had, as part of our application, we have a concrete pad and brine tanks located in this location adjacent to the covered storage bins. That, those brine tanks, it's more of a winter operation. They don't think they're going to have those actually onsite and installed before June, so we hope that they'd be able to get the CO for the building without those tanks installed. Additionally, we have a fuel tank located in this location. That likely won't be installed by June. That may come a little bit later. We didn't want the absence of that tank installed to hold up the issuance of the CO for the building. And then lastly, the storage bins themselves, they may or may not be completed in their entirety in June. We were hoping that the commission would still allow for a COV be issued for the building use. Obviously, they just wouldn't be using these bins until those were completed. Those are just three minor elements that we wanted to run by the commission to make sure you were comfortable. If those things weren't completed, the staff could still issue a certificate of occupancy for the use in the building.
You have a timeframe on that?
Well, the brine tanks probably wouldn't happen until before the winter. That's part of their winter operation. The bins themselves, they, they're coordinating, and they have, we have been coordinating with the block manufacturer, the structural engineer, for the final details for the installation of that covered structure. We believe the blocks are at the yard from the person, from the vendor that's selling the blocks. They very well may likely be installed by June, but it just may lag a few months. You know, I think maybe if we were to say by October 1st, that should be sufficient. I don't see the...
October 1st.
Yeah. I'm not sure about the fuel tank itself. The fuel tank is somewhat of a costly item. The pads installed, the ballards are installed, you know, the wiring for the alarm and everything's installed. I'm just not sure exactly the timeframe on when he's going to actually purchase that fuel tank and actually get it installed. I think that's more of a, you know, based on his operations, I'm not sure how interested the commission is in whether that is important to be installed for the CO of the building. So I'm not exactly sure the timeframe for the, for the fuel tank. Again, I apologize. I left my folder with my notes in the car. I don't know, Will and Scott, if there's anything that I didn't bring up that we may want to make sure we address?
I'm good. I think we talked about everything. There was a small area of gravel...
Yep.
...that I was saying if that's really the access to the pond.
Yeah, on the approved plan, I can kind of see it. You know, this is the limit of gravel for the outdoor storage of plants and, you know, some storage racks. This was the limit of asphalt. I think there was a little area here where we can just extend the asphalt a little bit.
Do you have a copy of Will and Scott's comments?
I, I do, and we actually, per the response, I didn't want to drop it on the commission. We can actually address all of them. I just left it in my car.
I'd like to just throw them through the list.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Do you have a copy?
In my car.
That's in your car.
That's in my car.
Why don't we just read them quick?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, let's start with the, with Will's. Plan sheet detailing proposed site improvement amendment should each include a supplemental title, including amended site plan.
Yep, and we actually added that. You can see the plans that we presented this evening have amended in the sheet title.
Notation should be added detailing the removal and disposal operations and schedule for the proposed warehouse floor drainage holding tank.
Yep, we added Note 14 to the site plan, which actually addresses that maintenance, that comment.
Expand the curve in landscape area to match the enlarged dumpster. I think you said you did that.
Yep, that's actually shown right here.
Okay.
And again, we had pulled it back. We previously had it a little bit more smooth coming into this edge, but when they installed the septic tank, that access manhole kind of created an issue with that. So our initial application showed that kind of coming here. We're going to simply just modify that there. Additionally, what's not shown on here is this baller is actually going to be installed, dumpster, in this location.
Okay, you already said that you pulled the irrigation back from the right-of-way. Plan showing the loading area in the southeast rear corner of the main building, as well as the vehicle storage area to the north of the main building should be restored.
Yep, and so that was really actually, that's really just a notation. So we had on our, you can see on our approved plan, we had this area shown for trailer parking. When we went from permitting to construction documents, a lot of those notations that are on there to establish, you know, permitting implications, we take those off because from a construction standpoint, we want to make sure the content is really driven to what the contractor's doing and if it's included in the contract or if it's by others. So a lot of those notations, you know, this one particular, some of the discussion about the storage down here, we had removed those from our drawings because we were playing, working with our construction document set. When we submitted these back to the commission for the approval amendment, we didn't add all that additional notation, so it was simply a, an issue of...
So that's, that's the next one, is the gravel storage. So that's addressed.
So we've added all those back to the, to the amended plans.
The approved plan showed a noted parking spaces for vehicle storage of heavy equipment and/or vehicles, loaders, skid steers, which has been deleted. The approved plan showed a noted an area for landscape plant storage, which has been deleted. The note label for the previously approved proposed seasonal rack storage now indicates by others should be modified to state designed by others, so not to confuse permitted use status.
Yep, and so all, all that actually detail was really focused in this area here. We added all those back in.
So that's all been addressed.
Yeah, the, the, the reference to by other was simply because the owner is installing those racks versus the contractor and what was included in the contract price.
They would set the inland wetlands scheduled for the 3/28 meeting?
We do have a letter from the weather. They did review that, and they gave a letter saying that they reviewed the, the flows changes and could handle it administratively with staff.
Plan should remove the gravel nomenclature shown at the northwest corner of the rear yard gravel rack storage area, reflecting a clarification that standard duty continuous pavement will be provided within the adjacent parking aisle dimension.
Yep, and I can show you that in the previously approved plan, the limit of gravel and asphalt came to here. We simply adjusted that based on Scott's comment.
Irrigation was already addressed. The holding tank have a gasket, a gasketed cover?
Yes, yep, we did add that to the plans.
And everything should be in line with the bond, correct?
Yeah, yes, the, we feel the bond that's supposed to be adequate and...
That addresses the staff comments. Do you have anything else, or should we go ask if the commissioners have any questions?
No, that's, summarizes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, you have any question? No. John?
When did you say the storage bins would be completed by?
Oh, so they have all intent to continue to, again, we gave the structural engineer and the Legio block vendor till tomorrow as a hard date to have their work coordinated so we can get this installed. I just don't know if they're going to have that installed by mid-June, when they expect to have all the rest of the site and building completed. So we were simply requesting that, that not be a condition of CO for the building occupation. You know, it very well may happen in June. It can happen in July. I'd say maybe if we can push it out until October 1st, it just gives the owner a little bit more time to have that completed.
Okay, no other questions?
Has the underground storage tank vented?
Um, yeah, there is a vent. It's part of the assembly of the construction. There is a vent for it, I believe. And we also, actually, we're out there this morning talking about how to make sure that it's built with a trap, so you don't have odors going back into the building, et cetera.
Right, because they're going to be working on vehicles in there. Do you have an oil separator in there?
They won't be, they won't be doing any maintenance or any services of any vehicles. That's simply going to be using to, to wash them, correct?
So you don't have any oil separator or anything?
No.
They have no discharge.
Right.
That's what the text is for.
Right.
I'm saying, yeah, a gasket is up in the tank. You don't have any kind of venting system or any kind of, you don't know what ends up in the tank, right? So you're going to have a vent on a tank. That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe part of that installation did include a vent.
Believe, or yes, there is a vent?
I, I believe.
There will be a vent.
There will be a vent.
Well, there has to be a vent. It won't work.
Yeah, there, yes.
But is the vent going to go on the building where you put, where you put it? It's a good question.
I, I think the vent is likely going to be just outside the building, so...
Yeah, well, yeah, it's going to run up the side of the building or something?
Correct. It's probably going to run right adjacent to, there's a roof leader coming down. You can see on, this is actually good. So we have roof leaders coming down on either side, so this will be vented probably right up adjacent to the building here.
And that's one of the reasons why I asked for the watertight manhole top on it, because then when it's full, if they don't empty it out, it'll back up into their building.
It says you have an alarm on there.
There will be an alarm with a float, correct? Oh, here we are. Floor drain maintenance schedule was anticipated that the vehicle maintenance operations will involve the washing of one truck per day for five business days per week, using approximately 20 gallons of water per wash drainage floor drain and then to the designated storage tank. Washwater levels in the tank will be monitored on a weekly basis by visual inspection and an electronic alarm system to an in-tank flow. Tanks pumping is anticipated to be once per month or on an as-needed basis. The owner actually, based on me this morning, thinks that that's, if they pump this twice a year, it would be a lot.
So are you considering this a small volume vehicle detailing facility?
No.
So then you're having a hazardous waste transporter take the water out?
Yes. Well, they'll take the water out based on whatever applicable regulations.
I'm just reading from the DEEP correspondence. They say if the wastewater from the tank is removed by a hazardous waste transporter and not taken to a sewage treatment plant in Connecticut, then they don't need a permit from DEEP.
Right.
The second option was it's classified as a small volume vehicle detailing facility.
Yeah, it, it's not going to be classified as a small volume vehicle detailing facility. It would simply be taken out by the appropriate parties to avoid, and it wouldn't be brought to a, with a treatment plant.
So you're saying they're not polishing or anything like, they're just washing it down with clean water?
Right.
Whatever's on the vehicle ends up in the tank.
Right.
So what kind of, is that like safety clean? Is that kind of service?
Similar, yeah, but they'll have a power washer inside that they'll use to hose down their car, the trucks. And we can certainly add some additional notation from that letter to this, so that it's documented and established on the plans. We can incorporate that in the note.
Anything else, Leon?
Just why do we uncover the storage containers together?
Um, part of its cost. Actually, some of the, the cost of the blocks and the bins themselves was kind of exceeded what was initially budgeted. Additionally, when we started to look at the structural design of the roof structure itself, the span for those was reduced. We initially had like 25 to 30 feet. That actually came down to about 16 feet. So when we looked at all those different aspects, trying to incorporate that with additional blocks and additional foundations for the blocks where the column loads were, that the owner elected to, request, is requesting to eliminate the cover on half of that space.
And you have it specified what you're going to store there, right?
Well, we do have, we do have notes on our plans about what's going to be stored there. And essentially, it's, you know, similar to what we've done in the past. It's anything that would be considered clean. But we have, you know, uncovered fill, uncovered storage for clean fill. So, and that's per Section 22A209, one of the regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. So, and that's, um, for section, uh, twenty-two A two oh nine, one of the regulations of Connecticut State Aberrances. Clean fill is defined as natural soil, rock, brick, ceramic, concrete, and asphalt paving fragments which are virtually inert imposing either a pollution threat to ground or surface waters nor a fire hazard. But that'll likely be, um, you know, clean stone, gravel, topsoil, things associated with, with, uh, Eastern Land Management's business operation.
Okay.
Paul? Uh, just a question about the fuel tank. Is that, is that for the vehicles or is it for other equipment?
It's just for, for their, for their, for their vehicles. So it's actually, they're actually looking at, uh, they're able to have a tank that has two compartments, some diesel, some gas, so they'll, they'll use that to fuel their, their vehicles. And then any of their, um, uh, you know, heavy equipment, loaders, things like that, those all get fueled from, you know, portable tanks on the back of pickup trucks. So they'll, so their employees will be able to fill those up with diesel, fill up their vehicles with, with gas. It's actually pretty interesting. We had a, a long conversation about this because, and I'm probably rambling. But the size of their fleet, you know, they spend, they go get gas every day, all their trucks with three employees. There's weeks of time efficiency with having them be able to fuel onsite instead of stopping at a gas station for ten minutes every morning when you look at the amount of trucks that they have. So it's, uh, it was pretty interesting.
What about the fuel pump, obviously?
Yes, yep, it's a, it's a fuel pump. It's very similar to, it's actually the same tank that was, uh, installed as part of the All-Star Transportation Project. So it's, it's equipped with alarms, um, it is a, it is a pump, and it'll have, you know, two pumps, one for gas and one for diesel.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Um, anything else from staff? No?
Did you say about exhibit?
Oh, yeah. I just added exhibit eleven. It's the letter from the England Waters Commission indicating that they're okay with the, uh, revisions to staff.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Sol?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Hey, moving on. Item number twelve, meeting minutes, March twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. We have... Condon, Formicelli. So... That's it.
That's it.
So, we have a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, meeting minutes dated March twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Corrections, modifications, notations, anything?
I haven't seen anything.
Call it off.
Condon, yes.
Formicelli, yes.
Porter, yes.
Got the two abstain, I think.
The two abstains. All right. Pending application deliberations. Um... First up... Well, we have, we have the added use in the I-two district, which was continued over from our last meeting. So are we ready to, uh, deliberate on that? Who was, um, who was at our last meeting where we...
I wasn't there.
Is it the March first meeting?
March first. Um, Paul was not present. Everybody else here. So you were all here for this, this public hearing?
Okay.
Well... What do you think?
So for this, would we just postpone the three items that he wanted till October first?
No, no, no.
No, no, we're not.
Oh, my...
You're on the wrong one.
You're on the wrong one.
Oh, the landscape. Arbor, in the I-two district.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I really... Okay, well, then our next step is that someone makes a...
Are you going to make a motion to approve, I also mean effective date? When's the effective date? Um, we can...
You ready?
Um, I would make it for April sixteenth.
Okay, so if we were to approve this, it would be, have an effective date of April sixteenth. So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve RAA two thousand eighteen dash oh two, file number nine nine seven E, added use in the I-two zone uh, with an effective date of April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Second.
Did you say two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
April, what was it?
April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any, uh, any further discussion?
Just why are we, uh, putting the date as to, uh, April sixteen?
I do the Monday after the legal notice, which is the Thursday, uh, week from today.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
We have to, we have to, we can't be effective bef, it has to be published to be effective, but we have to give an effective date, so I always do, uh, Monday after.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Call it off.
Condon, yes.
Formicelli, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Please abstain.
Okay, next we have the permit amendment modification for one fifty-four Enterprise Drive. Anybody? Anything?
I think we discussed and agreed to storage section, make sure the pipe is vented.
Yeah, first, we have, uh, do we want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
Can you speak up?
We have to say it loud enough so that the recording secretary can hear you.
I got John. I'm going to find it over here.
Motion to...
All right, there we go. Got to do it.
Yeah. Motion to approve permit amendment modification SEP two thousand sixteen dash twelve dash A one, file number one five eight two A one fifty-four Enterprise Drive.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Discussion?
Looks like he went and did a lot of what was asked of him, uh, and the three things. Was the storage containers won't be built. Assume that means he's not going to be storing either storage containers, fuel, or the, uh, was it salt water?
The brine tanks?
Brine tanks, so as long as he's not putting that stuff on the property without the proper storage, I don't see why we wouldn't, uh, allow the occupancy.
Well, historically, just, just so you know, historically, um, we have not issued certificates of occupancy until a project is one hundred percent completed. So what the applicant is requesting is that we waive the completion of these three items since they are not building items, but accessory items. That we waive the completion of these, uh, and issue a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of zoning compliance when the building and all of the parking and everything.
Do a conditional.
It would still be a conditional?
Yeah, because we'd still be conditional and hopefully there'd be the date relative to when the other, when the other things had to be done by. Because it isn't complete, so we need something still to make it complete.
All right, so the applicant indicated that the storage tank and I would imagine the brine tank, if they're going to use it for the upcoming, the, the next winter season, should be in by October first. So the only issue then would be whether or not they had the fuel tank in by October first, and...
They could come back.
What's that?
They could come back.
Come back from...
That's what I'm saying.
And I would suggest if you could that, that it be simply the installation of the, the tank. He did say most of it was already in, but we should involve an excavation and all the utilities leading up to it should already be in, which I think he said they would.
Yeah, I think he said there was an alarm. There was, yeah.
So it's really just kind of hooking it up.
It's going on October first.
Right. So that, and so I believe that the applicant is requesting this now so that when they are ready to occupy the building, they don't have to come back because we have, uh, we have made it so that applicants have to come before the commission if they're not completely... Um, it's not something that can be done on, on the counter administratively, so...
But if we were to put a complete by date and it's not completed, then they would have to come back.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I would also, beyond that issue, if you could just put a, a condition that staff confirmed that he did the things that they presented. We didn't see them other than telling us that they did.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so all of the, all of the issues in the staff reports have to be completed, and the brine tank, fuel tanks, and storage bins uh, have an October first completion date. Good with that. Yeah. Anything else, Will?
No.
Scott?
Uh, no.
All right. If there's no further discussion, we'll call it off.
Condon, yes.
Formicelli, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Lee, yes.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else for us to deliberate on, is there?
Nope.
Moving on. Other business, item number fourteen, regulation review amendment work session. We have not had one since we last met as a commissioner. We will not be having one this upcoming week. I'm going to be away.
Is the pregnant kid's next week?
Pardon us?
Next, yeah. I mean, the week after that might be hard for me. That springs like my kids, I try to not work.
We don't, these are, these are next...
I'll, I'll look for the meeting, but...
We have a meeting. Yeah. So we will, uh, we will discuss it at our next commission meeting and possibly the last week of the month, we might have a meeting. There's nothing pressing in that regard, is there?
No.
Correspondence, I have not received any correspondence. Commission reports, I have nothing new to report. Anybody have anything to report? Staff, anything to report?
Yeah, I, I do. I have a kind of question for clarification. I've been asked to do a report for, um, road acceptance and bond release, and I know the applicant has intentions to come before you, but I wanted to provide some input because it's my understanding that, um, if they're not one hundred percent, this is a subdivision. If an applicant is not one hundred percent complete with the work, meaning that the, there's still corrections to, say, detention basins, uh, completion of landscaping, uh, that kind of thing, that you will not entertain that? Or should, you know, I wanted to relay that to them so they wouldn't waste your time or end their time coming, or would you entertain that?
I'll clarify a little bit more.
Yeah, and...
Their, their specific information. You have a subdivision, you have a road, public improvements, all the public improvements are supposed to be completed by the subdivision in order for the town to accept the road. The process of accepting the road is first, they give us an asphalt, the town agent reviews it, reviews to see if everything's complete, makes a recommendation to you and eventually the town council. You're making a determination that they did what they were supposed to do under your subdivision approval, so you see no reason why the town can't accept the road and take ownership and maintenance of the road. And the next step would be the town council would actually do that. That's why it's supposed to be complete, because the town wants a finished product. And then when the town accepts it, they're then held a, a year maintenance agreeing, uh, bond. And that's just in case something isn't done, that's sort of like a warranty.
Right.
But that's not to do the stuff you're supposed to do because, you know, it's sort of like it went wrong and now you lost your warranty. You got the new computer, but you don't have any warranty anymore. So, I mean...
Yeah, they want to use the, the maintenance, uh...
Period to finish the project?
To finish as a performance type thing, and it's like we're...
And so there's, there's work on the detention basins that's left?
Yeah, the detention basins essentially are not functioning the way they're supposed to, and there's some retrofitting that has to be done to get them to...
That sounds pretty major to me.
That's my feeling as well.
And there are a few others.
There is a, there is a few other things too. They're, on their part, fairness to them, the, the, the comment is that they're trying to get it accepted because they got a bunch of homeowners that live there now that are upset because their kids aren't going to get picked up by the bus. They have to walk down to the end of the street.
Finish the job.
So I just wanted...
Which subdivision?
I just wanted to get the...
Is this Chinaski subdivision, Whitehead, Deer?
Deer Meadow.
Deer Meadow, where is that?
Off, uh, Homer Town Hall. Where his house is?
Yeah.
And this becomes a public thriller, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the next step. You're, you're basically saying it's ready to be a public road, so the town council...
Yeah, I, I couldn't, I couldn't in good conscience report to the town council that this road is ready to be taken over by the town if...
And that was our feeling too.
There are major deficiencies.
I just wanted to formally get you guys to, you know, comment so we have that.
Because once it becomes a town's, then it, then we take li- liability for it, right?
Right, right. It gets complicated then because we own it, but yet they're coming in to do work on it.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, if it, if it was maybe a few trees needed to go in, you know, maybe we could be a little more lenient, but if it's, if it's something as major as a detention basin or some drainage structures that are not functioning properly, I think my opinion is that they need to take care of that first.
Okay.
Then we'd be more than happy to
work with them.
You know? Recommend it for the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody? Anything? Motion to adjourn? All right.